This is our April 11, 2012 City Commission meeting will come to order, Madam City Manager.
Will you please stand and join me in the invocation? Eternal God, we come before you this evening with thanks and appreciation for all of the great gifts we have as inhabitants of this earth. As we prepare to celebrate Earth Day 2012, grant us the wisdom to protect our precious resources and all things that you have provided for our use. And as always, we seek your divine insight as we convene tonight to conduct business on behalf of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Well, are there any agenda modifications, Madam City Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We have one deletion from today's agenda. That is item number 13.03 related to the local business certification program update. And we will bring that item back to you on the 25th, the meeting scheduled now for April 25th. And that's the only mod that I have.
Well, we added something to the presentation.
Okay, you're going to add?
A presentation by Health by the Numbers.
Okay.
It was, Commissioners, I was gonna do this as sharing of ideas, but we got some folks here that I'd like to call and as a part of presentation. Then we do have a very short presentation.
So you're gonna do that as item 5.04?
Correct.
Okay.
Well.
That'll be Health by the Numbers.
I'm not so sure about our first presentation because that was supposed to be for the FAMU Developmental Research Schools girls basketball team recognizing them as state champions.
They're here?
They're not here. Okay. Moving swiftly along, maybe we can get them back at another point. Is David Malcolm here? David, come right on up. He's a partner in landscape architects and land planners, and he's joining me at the podium because of the City of Tallahassee devotion to environmentalism. Landscape architecture is certainly a well-appreciated field in this community. The places that we frequently frequent every day, businesses, government offices, neighborhoods, are all beautiful and appreciated because of the benefits of landscape architecture. Additionally, landscape architecture helps to assist the efforts of good public community health practices. Landscape architecture helps communities maximize opportunities for daily exercise like walking and biking. They assist communities in developing healthy green buildings and open spaces that promote efficient water and energy use and provide substantial amounts of vegetation to clean air and cool temperatures. In doing so, communities can avoid the expensive health epidemics associated with automobile dependency, sedentary lifestyles, along with the high cost to the environment brought by dysfunctional patterns of living. Therefore, as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, we would like to present this proclamation to the National Landscape Architecture Month, and it reads as follows. Whereas the profession of landscape architecture enhances our city through the skillful and awful creation of safe, functional, accessible, secure, and aesthetically pleasing public and private places, whereas by integrating site analysis, design, master planning, and technical skills, landscape architects are dedicated facilitators, helping to lead the way in the creation of beautiful, functional, and environmentally sound places in which we live, work, and play. Whereas landscapes architects, through planning and design, with careful stewardship of land and water resources, serve to preserve, protect, and conserve the nation's scenic beauty, unique and fragile ecosystems, and treasured natural resources. And whereas the profession of landscape architecture fosters and promotes economically and ecologically sustained development for our citizens' present enjoyment while ensuring the same opportunity for future generations' sustainability, whereas the profession of landscape architecture is regulated by all 50 states in the Union on the basis of its recognized significance in protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas landscape architects, both in the public and private sector, help shape the development of the City of Tallahassee, and many, through dedication to their discipline, have donated their time and talent to serve the community in constructive ways. Now therefore, I John R. Marsh III and the City of Tallahassee, Florida hereby commence landscape architects for their work and recognize the month of April 2012 as National Landscape Architecture Month. Thank you, sir. A lot, but it's well deserved, okay? You got anything you want to say?
Thank you very much for the time, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Very much thank you for this moment, public recognition for the profession of landscape architecture. It's important that this small, young profession, just over 100 years old, does this in all 50 states in April. It might be because Frederick Olmsted was born this month, but perhaps it's because people come out of their houses and start to breathe fresh air and see the green and enjoy the public spaces that cities like Tallahassee have to offer. I'd also like to take this opportunity to say specifically, thank you very much to the commission, to you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership, for your sustaining the vision for making a public investment in our city and its public spaces, in the places that make up the collection of outward, outdoor environmental spaces that make Tallahassee such a beautiful, special environment. Projects like Capital Cascades Park, its Gain Street and the revitalization that's happening there, it's the projects at Midtown, and then it's other projects too that make up the collection of what Tallahassee is. It's McClay Gardens, it's TCC, FSU and FAMU campuses, and churches and residences across the city that make up what Tallahassee is. And we thank you very much again for being leaders, supporting these kinds of public infrastructure projects in a time when it's so difficult, so many cities are pulling back. You're showing vision and moving forward, and we thank you very much for doing that on behalf of the city. And again, on behalf of all landscape architects, we appreciate this time and this recognition and look forward to being of service both in volunteer and in professional capacity in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just remarking how the interchange is on I-10 and the landscaping that's going on there looks really, really, very, very good. Earth Week, Adam Jacobs and John Powell of Environmental Policy and Energy Resources Department with the City of Tallahassee, please join me at the podium. Our community has long been a key example in our state and nation with regards to sustainability and environmental stewardship. There are countless examples of how our community, time and time again, takes consideration of sustainability at the very core of how we plan in the City of Tallahassee. The very goal of Earth Week is to stimulate sustainability and environmental awareness of our most precious natural resources. As mayor, I want to thank Cynthia Barber. Where's Cynthia today? She's out there sustaining things.
She's sustaining.
As mayor, I thank Cynthia Barber, Director of the EPE, Eper Department, and all of the staff for all that you do to promote our green initiatives on behalf of the city and on behalf of the City Commission. I would like to present this proclamation celebrating Earth Week, and let me read it as follows. Whereas, April 22, 2012 marks the 42nd Earth Day, which began on April 22, 1970, with a goal of inspiring environmental awareness, encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. Whereas the City of Tallahassee was the first city to be certified as a green city at the gold level by the Florida Green Building Coalition. Whereas the City of Tallahassee has implemented innovative energy efficiency programs such as Residential Green Building Program, the Neighborhood Reach Community Program, and the Energy Conservation Loan Program. And whereas, in 2011, the City of Tallahassee was named by the U.S. Conference of Mayors as the most, as a most livable city. And whereas the City of Tallahassee's 2011 Get Their Green nomination for the Sustainable Florida Best Practice Awards was named the winner in the governmental category and is the only nominee to win the award twice. Whereas the City of Tallahassee gained national and international recognition by being selected by the International City County Management Association to participate in the U.S. Department of State Fellowship for Creating More Sustainable Communities. Whereas the City of Tallahassee was honored by ICLI, that is, Local Governments for Sustainability for Completing the Comprehensive Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory and Forecast, adopting emissions reduction targets, developing and implementing a local action plan, and monitoring and verifying results. Whereas for 19 consecutive years, the city has been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. And whereas the various activities planned by the City of Tallahassee and different community groups, as well as private and public organizations to commemorate Earth Day locally, further reflect the city's strong commitment to the environment and its stewardship and sustainability. And whereas the City of Tallahassee proudly recognizes all who follow positive environmental practices year-round, and all who strive to meet the needs of the present, present without compromising the ability of future generations to do the same, and all who participate in 2012 Earth Day events. Now therefore, I John R. Marsh by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee do hereby proclaim this week, April 16 through April 22, in Tallahassee, as Earth Week. And I want to commend our staff for everything they do because they work hard at this, and we do have a great program in the City of Tallahassee. Our sustainable program is second to none, and we're gonna come out with another program very shortly. Either one of you guys want to say anything? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Manager, and appointed officials. As y'all know, Earth Day activities highlight the many ways that we all can do our part to reduce environmental impacts, reduce costs, and enjoy the quality of life that we have here in Tallahassee. Would like to also take a moment to highlight the city's Earth Day in the Park event, which will be on April 22 from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the city's chain of parks, which will focus on health, wellness, and the city's parks and recreation system. In between the music, dancing, and exhibits, we will also be featuring one-mile walking groups, which are still looking for some volunteers, and hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now ladies and gentlemen, I have one other thing this morning. Oh, here's the basketball team. Tell them, come on in. It's not too late. Come on in. Something happened this morning that was very, very special for our community. We had the kickoff of Health by the Numbers, 95210. And it was really outstanding and extremely successful. And Rick has just a few slides he wants to show you regarding that kickoff this morning. It was really very good. The superintendent was there, the county, the vice chair of the county commission was there, another brother individuals there from our community to help kick off this program, which really is gonna be impactful here in the City of Tallahassee. Rick?
Those are just some of the slides. Any more?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We had about 60 students from Conley Elementary come and sing the 95210 song to the tune of Bingo. Great press conference, it just really turned out well. We had Vice Chair Nick Maddox from the County Commission, Commissioner Kristen Dozier, City Commissioner Nancy Miller, and Superintendent Jackie Pons.
County Commissioner Kristen Dozier, did you say?
Yes, yes, sir. And sir, I don't know if you want to talk about this next slide. What we're asking people to do next is for local elected officials, community leaders, and anyone interested in helping with the initiative itself, we're asking folks to choose one of the five tenants, one of the numbers, 9, 5, 2, 1, or 0, and help us promote that tenant during the month that we're selecting for that. Starting in May, we're gonna have nine hours of sleep per day as the main focus. In June, it'll be five fruits and vegetables and so forth. And then we're also gonna be doing some creative things out in the community to help promote the 95210 message. So for instance, for anybody out there in the, in the community that would like to help us do some sign waving at intersections like Monroe and Tennessee and elsewhere, please email Melissa Ingram. And the email address is on the screen, but it's mlissa, M-L-I-S-A dot Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M, at talgov.com. And then for anyone in the community that's interested in becoming healthier, please visit the website. It's healthbythenumbers.us. And then you can also join us on Facebook and Twitter. And then, most importantly, just talk around the community with your coworkers and friends and family and neighbors about the importance of 95210. You know, explain what that, what that means, and help spread the message about healthy living.
I just want to commend my staff for all the work they've done on this from our perspective. But this has been a community effort, truly a community effort from all segments of our community. And I'd like to take a moment. Sheila Costigan is here and others here, if they have to, if they would like to say a word with regards to this initiative. Mark, Sheila?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam City Manager and Commissioners. Actually, we would like to speak about 95210, but we're here for another reason as well. We, first of all, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for being such a great community partner and bringing this initiative to light. It's just, once again, something else that the city has done to make sure that our community is one of the most healthy places to live and to work and to play, and we can't thank you enough.
Ms. Costigan, would you tell us, excuse me, one more time, what the numbers stand for? Because we're looking at the nine and the five and the two. We saw that on the, the.
As long as I don't have to sing the song, I'll be glad.
What's the one and the zero?
The, it's nine hours of sleep, which all of us, remember, we talked about this one time, five fruits and vegetables, servings of fruits and vegetables, two hours of limited recreational screen time, which is very, very difficult for our youth, one hour of uninterrupted physical activity, and zero sugary beverages and tobacco.
Okay.
And you'll be seeing this all over town. We'll be waving signs on the street corners. We'll be, have all PSAs and television talk shows and lots of commercials, and we'll be making sure the message gets out to all of our elementary students especially. It's already launched in our preschools, and we're already affecting 1,400 families, and we've already seen improvements in their behaviors. We know it can work, and we're very excited about it. And one of the partners who's also helped to get this launched is Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare. And with me today is CEO Mark O'Brien. And we would like to recognize the city for its efforts in our past third annual stomping out type 2 diabetes. You might recall that I've mentioned to you before that one-third of our student population is at risk for developing type 2 diabetes, a chronic disease often associated with lack of exercise and poor nutrition. And thanks to you, for the third year in a row, we have been able to generate income to fund wellness programs in our schools. We've been able to increase participation three times, triple R participation. We've been able to give free healthcare screenings to the people who come out. We delivered over 1,000 free lunches. We developed 900 free batches of yogurts. We were able to have a fishing derby, and we were able to give, kids were able to fish to enjoy, another way to enjoy our great parks. And we are just so thrilled, more than 150 volunteers come together, and we hope that this becomes a model for other cities throughout the state and certainly for other education foundations. Behind us also, we have some more partners, Premier Health and Fitness, Tuck Tucker is here to represent them, alum. And I want to introduce J.R.A., Architect Dave Vincent, who is also on our Board of Directors for the foundation, and Brian Deloge, Commissioner Deloge is also on our foundation board. But at this time, I'd like to call up Dee Crumpler. And while he's walking up here, I'd like for Mark to say a few words about the importance of community health.
Sure. Actually, I like the 95210 program. I personally want to support, as an active participant, the nine hours of sleep.
Me too.
I don't think that's likely to occur unless the rotation of the earth slows by about three more hours. But going back to our program with STOMP and the issue of wellness, we recognize at TMH that the quality of life of a community is also defined by its quality of health, that the quality of health is a foundational element of quality of life. And we serve in a specific role in helping to enhance that quality of life of a community, not by just providing services within the walls for people who have medical crisis or traumatic events, but by promoting wellness and health in the community. We have an articulated, a formal vision statement at TMH, and you may have heard it, is that we want to be a recognized world-class community health system. And the good news is that we're making progress along that vision path, and we expect to be sharing more on that as we move forward. But our long-term goal, that's actually a relatively short-term goal, we recognize that that's just a part of the process. Our long-term goal is to help establish Tallahassee as the healthiest community in our nation. And there's nowhere better to start that process than with our children. We recognize that to be a healthy community, we have to have healthy behaviors, healthy lifestyles, that we need to prevent those disease states from occurring if we can. And how you do that is by influencing them, teaching them, and helping them direct their paths in a healthy way. And that's what STOMP and 95210 are all about.
Yes.
Thank you. That is so well said. We asked for Dee to come forward, the recognition that we're giving you, and how nice it is for you to be recognized. I know the mayor does a lot of that every meeting. It is, thanks for being the 2012 Play With a Purpose sponsor, and that's the City of Tallahassee. Dee works so hard with us to put this on. TMH is our premier sponsor. They give, they do all the free screenings at the, at the event coupled with FSU Med School. And the City of Tallahassee, you have just done so much. Dee gives so much for his staff. They come out, they take care of us, they make sure that everything runs safely and efficiently. And we could not host this without your help. And so thank you for everything you've done. And on behalf of the foundation for Leon County Schools and TMH, we want to hand this over to Dee, so he can stick it in the office with all the other awards you guys have.
Let me make one more comment. It is a benefit and a pleasure for us to serve as a partner with the foundation of Leon County Schools in this STOMP program. But also, we have other partnerships that we have across the community, including the City of Tallahassee, and most recently with the Parks and Recs Program with a very successful Challenger Tennis Program. Dee and his staff just do a wonderful job of providing a platform for us to sponsor that event, and it's a great enhancement to the quality of life of our community, and it comes through you, and we do appreciate that and the efforts of Dee.
Dee?
My name got thrown around a whole lot there, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank you, Mayor, the Commissioners, and the City Manager. This is because of your support of our programs. And, you know, Mark and I and Sheila talked last night, and it's really neat to have business partners in our community that are supporting us and helping us, and it's about quality of life, and it just impacts so many things, from reducing stress to reducing diabetes, and just making us an even better place for people to live and to come and start their businesses, and we're just extremely excited about it. And I want to thank all of you up here, and obviously the staff in Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Affairs, and this is fun to place somewhere, place in City Hall. Thank you.
And because I want to thank FAMU because you're represented here too. We have at least 100 college student athletes who come out and participate in the Premier Fitness Celebrity Challenge. And so FAMU sends about 50 athletes out every year to help us with our stomping out type 2 diabetes. So once again, you guys rule the world.
Thank you. I got that slightly mixed up because everybody that's sitting down there was at the kickoff this morning. Almost everybody was at the kickoff, so I thought you were here for the 95210 event. But what you talked about was a tremendously good segue into what we talked about, into what you wanted to say. And childhood obesity is significant. It's an issue that we all have to, have to address and be mindful of. And we will have an initiative doing this. So I want to thank you and Mark. You know, we got people like you in our community that's willing to work for positive changes in our community. Rather than being critical about some things that happen here, you go out and do it. And that's what we need in this community. Those are the kind of people that make this community what it is. So thank you. Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to this health initiative. This is really gonna be good because we've got the buy-in from a number of individuals in our community. I mean, it's all over. You are all gonna be very, very surprised and very, very, you're gonna like this a lot. And I'm gonna even get as healthy as I can as we do that. So thank you again. Now, we do have with us another presentation with Coach Ahmad Ali and the 2011 State Championship FAMU Developmental Research Schools girls basketball team. Please join me at the podium. All of you, come on. Being a former high school athlete, not really good at it, but I still try, I understand the drive, tenacity, and effort that it takes to be an athlete. Moreover, I recognize the complexity that presents itself when tasked with the challenge of being equally successful on the court and the classroom. Therefore, as mayor, I want to congratulate you. Congratulate you on achieving what others set out to do and weren't as successful. And that is winning in the classroom and winning a state championship. Now I would like to present to you this proclamation signifying our appreciation for your positive representation of this community, and doing so in an exemplary fashion by winning the highest, winning on the highest stage that you could. And boy, y'all look great. The Blazers look wonderful too. So here's the proclamation. Whereas the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team is coached by head coach Ahmed Ali and assisted by James Brown, Vince Parkey, Tasha McKinnon, Patrice Leegon, and Melissa Leon. And whereas the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team completed, competed against Acela Christians girls basketball team and won, get the score, 58 to 13 in the district championship game held on Friday, February 2, 2012. And whereas the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team competed against Geneva girls basketball team and won, here we go again, 73 to 33 in the regional championship game on Saturday, February 28, 2012. And whereas the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team progressed to the semifinal game at the FHSAA State Final Four Series in Lakeland, Florida at the Lakeland Convention Center, held on Tuesday, February 21, 2012, and defeated Academy at the Lakes, here we go again, 67 to 46. And whereas the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team competed in the championship game on Wednesday, February 22, 2012, and defeated Hollywood Christian Academy, a slight bit closer this time. Yeah, you really had to work for that championship, didn't you? The score was 55 to 53 on that one. They had to really work on that one. To become the girls' basketball 2A state champions. Now therefore, I John R. Marsh by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee do hereby honor the FAMU Developmental Research School girls basketball team of 2012, and ask all of the city to join me in recognizing and congratulating them for their outstanding performance and accomplishments in the 2012 basketball season. Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. I went to school with John, so, and he knew me by another name then, but I never remember him being a basketball player. That was new for me, but, you know, always a great deal of respect and for John and what he's done. On behalf of FAMU DRS, the administration, our teachers, students, our administration, our athletic director, parents, and our team and my staff, we want to really thank you for bringing us here and. you for bringing us here and honoring us today. I think that these young ladies deserve it. We had a tremendous season this year. We had a tournament in Pensacola, and after that, we made some goals that we wouldn't lose another game during the regular season, and it just carried over. The team that we beat in the state, really last year, they beat everybody, all divisions, all classes, and they beat us up pretty good in the semifinal game. So, we really wanted to get them back, and we did. They were a great team, but we were just up to task. So, again, on behalf of everybody involved, this is a great honor, and thank you very much, and also for us representing Tallahassee. Thank you. I am just really so proud of these young ladies and how they represent our city and the positive things that you do. So, you girls are absolutely wonderful. Thank you so much for working hard. Now, on to the next level, right? All right, on to the next level, folks. No, he's right. Mr. Ali was, Ali is right. We knew each other in school way back, don't say, a long time ago, at Florida State University. He was an outstanding basketball player for Florida State University. I mean, truly outstanding. And it's just good to see him go into this area, area, and now coach these young ladies. And he certainly deserves a lot of recognition for what he has done for FAMU Developmental Research School and for this community. So, thank you very much, and the coaches, you all too, okay? Thank you, young ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, Madam City Manager.
We're on item number eight, Mr. Mayor, citizen input on agenda items.
Are there any speakers?
Mayor, we had two speakers, but both were on item 1303, which has been moved to a later meeting, so we don't have any speakers at this time.
Okay, no more speakers, next item.
We're on consent, Mr. Mayor. We're on consent.
Consent, second.
It's been properly moved in second. I got just a couple of questions on 901. Last night, the county took action that impacts this, is that correct? The removal of the trees, does that impact this?
Yes, it passed.
It passed 6 to 1, which I think is good, and I obviously support this. On 902, though, I have another question. When I look at the charitable contributions provision, none of the bidders bid it and put in there anything related to charitable contributions. And that kind of threw me a little bit, because we put that in there with a goal in mind, with a goal in mind of really helping our charities. And so, it looks like to me if nobody, if nobody puts anything in there with regards to charitable contributions, everybody gets a pass. And I don't know what's happening there or what, but that kind of disturbed me. So, Madam City Manager, I would like to see, can we have an update on how that program is really working?
Yes.
And whether or not we're getting what we thought we would get with charitable contributions? Because it's a good program, and I support it, but I'm not so sure if we're getting what we should get out of it. And there may be, may need to be some sort of modification so we can enhance this fund. Commissioner?
I think we had an audit on that that came out, I guess, last February, somewhere around that time. But actually, Mr. McCall has audited all of the preference programs, and included in that is an audit of the contributions section of the preferences.
We can give you a more recent update if you'd like.
I'd like a more recent update, find out what's going on and everything. But thank you, Commissioner, you're correct. And with that, we have a motion in the second on consent. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item number 13.01, Discussion of the Use of Federal Neighborhood Stabilization Funds Program Income for Home Buyer Assistance. And Commissioners, in 2009, the city received a $2.9 million grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Funds from this program were used to acquire and rehabilitate foreclosed properties in targeted areas of the city. NSP properties must be sold or leased to low-income persons. And one of the properties that the city acquired through this program was a single-family home located at 1425 Colorado Street. The home has since been renovated and placed on the market for sale. It stayed on the market for approximately one year, and we received one offer from an eligible buyer who also happens to be a city employee. The Tallahassee Lenders Consortium is working with the buyer currently to ascertain that he can qualify for a mortgage to purchase the property in approximately one year. The proposed action is to execute a 24-month lease purchase agreement with the buyer. And Michael Parker is here to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Any questions, comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, just so that we can be clear around the intentions for the original grant of 2.9 million. Those monies, as I understand them, were intended to go into communities to help stabilize neighborhoods that are either in disrepair, you, that are experiencing major foreclosure issues in those neighborhoods, but to bring general stability to that area, is that correct?
That's correct. The money, the funds had to be used exclusively for purchasing and rehabilitating foreclosed properties, and it could only be in targeted areas within the community as identified by HUD.
And those targeted areas, I assume, have some economically depressed indicators.
Correct, yes, sir. It had both income as well as high levels of foreclosure and real estate stress.
Got it. And the way Tallahassee Lenders was brought into the picture was, in what way? To help us figure out a tenant that could be qualified?
Typically, we refer someone to them, because we, they run the city's down payment assistance program, and they help bridge the, and link up the eligible home buyer with an eligible lender. And then, if they are able to do, to qualify for a loan, then they may be qualified for our down payment assistance. Many times, when we make a referral or a person goes to them, they have issues that don't allow them to qualify for a mortgage at that time. And then, the lenders consortium will make an assessment as to whether it can be repaired, and then they'll work with the potential home buyer and put together a program for them to try and get to them to the point where they could qualify for a mortgage.
I've seen the really good work that the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium and some of their peers out there have done in helping to bring folks who desire to one day own a home, but for whatever range of reasons, at that time, would not necessarily qualify to flat-out go and get a mortgage. And I'm really pleased that even though this has been on the market for a year, that we're trying to at least get some stability going on back in this, in this area. I'm very familiar with Colorado Street. I think it would be good community service as well as housing policy to see any houses that we've got in there that are vacant stabilized and have a resident, working resident in them. Is there anything about this that gives you heartburn that the one applicant that did make interest or express interest in the property is also a city employee?
No, sir. You know, as part of the grant, we adopted a policy that, which is actually included in your agenda item about determining whether a conflict of interest exists, and that does not exist based on that policy. So, no, sir. We have, and historically, the city has offered affordable housing programs through a number of different venues, whether it's down payment assistance or infill housing. And we have consistently used the criteria of eligibility based on the income, and that criteria as how we select the beneficiaries.
So, we've never discriminated in a program like this from someone simply because they work for the government? Qualifying indicators are economic in nature.
That's correct.
Got it. And so, as I understand, the way this will work is they will lease the property or be renters for up to 24 months or an exact 24 months. And in that time, we hope that they will then have received the sort of counseling and guidance and prep that they need to then be able to purchase the home.
That's correct.
Got it.
The idea is to try and encourage them to qualify within 12 months. So, if they qualify within the 12 months, then we would allow a certain percentage of the lease proceeds that we received, that is net of what we have to spend to manage the property, to be applied as a down payment.
Got it.
That's good. Okay, any other questions?
I move the item, Mayor.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item number 13.02, Discussion of Request for Rental Rehabilitation Loan Program Appropriation and Authorization to Negotiate and Execute Contracts for the Program. And Commissioners, the Economic and Community Development Department is requesting the city commission appropriate all of the funds that we currently have remaining in the rental rehabilitation fund, which currently is at $73,406, and authorize staff to negotiate and execute contracts for the rental rehab program. Homes to be rehabilitated with this funding will serve households at 80% or lower area median income for an affordability period of up to 10 years. I'd like to ask Michael Parker if he would come forward and remind you of the purposes of the rental rehab program and how it fits into our overall housing plan that's been approved by the federal government.
Yes, ma'am. The rental rehab program is basically the residual funds from a program that HUD ran many, many years ago. And essentially, what we provide funding is low-interest loans through that fund to property owners who rehabilitate their rental property for low-income persons. And we have a fund balance in there. This is really a housekeeping issue, because we need to have you appropriate that fund balance, because we have several loan applications pending. But the idea here is to provide an incentive for property owners who have rental property that's available to low-income persons to rehabilitate that property.
Any questions?
I just have one question.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
I was wondering if there's an income limitation or any income criteria on the people that are able to get these loans?
No, ma'am, it's not based on the income capabilities of the borrower, it's based on the commitment that they have, that all the units that they lease have to be leased to income-eligible persons, and the rents they charge have to fit the profile for affordability.
And you all have some sort of guidelines as to what the types of loans, the length of the loan, the interest rate, and so on, okay?
Is there a reason why we didn't, thank you, Mayor, consider percentages below 80% AMI? Just given what we know data-wise?
I mean, as far as the restrictions on what the income can be for the tenants?
The type of housing in which we are creating, you're creating housing that's at 80% of the area median income. And I'm wondering if we considered anything lower than that, given what our housing studies have shown us with regard to where the greatest need is?
To this point, we have not. We've been relying basically on the federal guidelines that were originally established with the funds, though I will tell you, we have the flexibility to consider that in the future.
In the future, but not here? I don't want to throw, because I think 80% AMI is totally fine, and I don't want to throw off the character, obviously, of the project, but, you know, we've seen housing projection need numbers that are much lower than that. And I was just wondering, how do we get to?
If we were looking at reducing the qualification to, say, 50% of AMI, that is something that we could consider. I will tell you that we have applications pending, and we only have a balance of $73,000. But the loan fund will be, it's a revolving loan, so when the funds are paid, they go back into the fund. We could certainly bring that back probably to the Long Range Target Issue Committee, which handles affordable housing, if you'd like, for consideration.
Well, I don't, I don't want to do injury to this particular one, but I think in the future, I know we've traditionally gone by the sort of federal standard of 80, but I think our local community does suggest something different, and maybe even lower than that, that we may want to consider that in housing projects that we're involved in.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Zifford?
Do you have any idea how old those federal guidelines are?
Well, the 80% is consistent with what the standard guidelines are. All federal funds, for example, community development, block grants, home, they all use the 80% of AMI. That's what's considered low income. And 50% or less is considered very low income.
And you're, but, I mean, the reason for asking is you're familiar with the housing data, because you provided it to us.
Yes, sir.
That demonstrated that something like 80% of the need, and I don't want to exaggerate the numbers, but was that somewhere between 40 and 50% of AMI, that the demand in this area?
Yes, sir. Our rental housing market is greatly influenced by the student population, and so particularly for multifamily, larger units, there is a definite shortage.
Okay. Thank you very much. We got a motion?
So, moved.
Second. Properly moved in second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. The next item was continued, right?
Yes.
All right. Next item after that.
The next item is item 13.04, Discussion of Proposed Property Sale to Goodwill Industries, Incorporated. And Commissioners, this item is recommending to you the sale of city property to Goodwill Industries, Incorporated, in the amount of $635,000, which is the value of the land without the buildings. And Goodwill has put the buildings on the property. Goodwill has leased a portion of this property from the city since 1968, and they would like to secure a permanent location for their regional headquarters. Goodwill has also agreed to a three-year human services partnership that will focus on youth and homeless population and the unemployed, actually providing direct services to city referrals. Mark Bedouin is here, and I believe we have representatives from Goodwill here as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to need to abstain on this, I'm working on a bond issue with Goodwill that get done, hopefully, sometime.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Manager, for allowing me to give you a brief overview of this item. Before I do that, I'd like to acknowledge several people instrumental in the development of this agreement. Mr. Fred Schelfer, President and CEO of Goodwill. Stacy Larkin is Goodwill's Vice President for Human Services. Pat Holliday is our Human Services Coordinator. And Mr. Coe, I know he never likes to take credit, but he was, he was kind of the brainchild of the Human Services Partnership, so I'd like to acknowledge those folks, and if we have any further questions of them, we can have that. This item represents a unique opportunity to achieve several objectives. Retain and expand Goodwill's Industries Regional Office and Retail Center. Also allows to sell city property currently receiving no income, and also develop a partnership for the provision of human services. The human services component is one that will develop a contract that will allow us to be accountable for what we're trying to provide, which is to serve 228 individuals over a three-year period. We're going to focus on the at-risk youth, that's what we originally started talking about, because we knew that was one of the focuses of the commission, was to try and deal with the at-risk youth problem and get them into training, get them into jobs, that's why we got the teen center together. So, that's a very important component of this, and so, we think the structure is to sell the real estate and also have a human services partnership that would equal the value of the leasehold interest and, you know, allow us to achieve these certain objectives. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to.
My understanding is this is going to be the regional headquarters for Goodwill?
Yes, and they're also going to expand their retail store up on Pensacola Street site. They have over 700 employees in this region, isn't that correct?
And that region encompasses what? 22 counties, they encompass 22 counties. And now, with this, so you're already regional, we have here permanently as regional headquarters, right? If we do this, which is a good thing for us. Okay, any other questions, Commissioners?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Properly moved in second.
Just one question.
Go right here.
How long before the agreements will be worked out with the human services partners that are identified here? What's the timeline before we get some concrete proposals on the table?
Commissioner, we've already started developing those relationships, we've already got a draft agreement, I would think in the next 30 days?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, next 30 days. Sounds good to me. I like that latter part, the human services partnership part with Goodwill, they've been doing a wonderful job.
I think it's their intention to try and close in early June.
Okay. And if Mr. Schelfer's done just an outstanding job with Goodwill since he's taken over, how many years has it been now for him?
10.
10 years now, and he's just done a great job. And this is just an example, how he's expanded the operations and services being provided by Goodwill. I know I've had a chance to visit out there, it may have been a while back, but it really is a fascinating operation, so. And if—Mr. Schelfer's done just an outstanding job with Goodwill since he's taken over. How many years has it been now, Fred?
Ten.
Ten years now, and he's just done a great job. And this is just an example, how he's expanded the operations and services being provided by Goodwill. I know—I've had a chance to visit out there. It may have been a while back, but it—it really is a fascinating operation, so—and you're growing everywhere. I see those Goodwill drop-off points coming up all over the place, which is good, which is a good thing. So thank you.
I was about to say, he—he's got a secret that can be shared with some of our developmental community. You get stuff going up everywhere, man.
I'm telling you, I got three within about two miles of me when I was in my house.
I live far from you. I think we're seeing those same three.
So—
But I just wanted to compliment you all on—and the staff, frankly, on the ability to think out of the box around how we got ourselves around the numbers in the sale of of—of—of this project.
Come on up, Fred, if you want to—he wants to comment before we go.
The job placement piece, adult—adult basic education, office skills training, the—the work that you all have projected to do with youth for job readiness. When we went out to survey young people in preparation of opening up the Palma Room Teen Center, when we asked them what their highest need area was, over eighty-seven percent of them identified the need for job placement and job skills. So I think what you're offering is a hungry need for.
All right. I'd like to just share a little more information with you. We are—we are running out of space in our administration building. Got people, you know, on top of one another, and we had to do something. The space that we're—we're going to move our retail down to Pensacola Street, corner Mayberry and Pensacola, which would be much better there. It'll free up about ten thousand square feet in our administration building, where we can put classrooms and—and offices and that sort of thing and provide these type services. So we—we looked at the value of the property, and we talked to you, your staff, about buying it. And then they said, "Well, what about the building? You going to pay for it?" And I said, "We already paid for it once, but you want us to do it again?" Well, the idea came up, we would do a service contract for that difference. So it's a difference in the value of the land and the value of the land plus a building. And so our response was, "Throw us in that briar—in that briar patch." That's just where we'd like to be. What we want to do is provide services for the target groups that we've mentioned. More employment, job-seeking skills, plus work with the at-risk youth. We already work with—with a number of programs with the city now, with fifty large. And so we—we already got some programs in place for the youth in the community that want an opportunity to—to find a—a good job. Work with the homeless, which a lot of them are just down the street from us, and we constantly do that, but we're going to do more of it, and—and do more job placement. So we need a partnership commitment from the city to feed to us applicants, so we can provide the services.
Easy. That shouldn't be too difficult at all, Fred.
This is a briar patch we both want to be in, and so we'll thrive there. You—you give us a challenge, and we'll do our part to meet it.
Thank you very much, Fred. We really appreciate all you're doing for Goodwill and our staff working with you. Thank you so much, and we look forward to a fruitful three years and maybe even beyond.
We've enjoyed working with you on this project so far, and we look forward to a lot of years of more participation between the city government and Goodwill Industries. Thank you.
Thank you. This is another good example of, you know, things that are happening in our community, and people are stepping up to the plate to make sure that we have a better community than we have. Last—than we have now. Last week, was it when we opened the Renaissance Center down in—in Frenchtown? The homeless shelter, homeless kind of a—that was last week, and that was an outstanding example of somebody in the private sector stepping to the plate and—and doing so—doing a wonderful project to help homeless individuals in our community. And this too, Fred, falls in that same category, and I—I don't think we can thank you enough as a community for what you're doing. So we—we like this kind of stuff. Anybody else? We got a motion and a second, don't we? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously with one abstention, and that is Commissioner Mustard.
Yeah, and I had a question, Mayor, just on how the—the money that will be paid in, where it's going to go here. And I—I know this came to the Financial Viability Committee. I can't remember if it's come to the Commission, but I—I think what we—we had suggested is changing our policy a little bit, where before we were filling up the deficiencies fund with—with any kind of sale like this. I think this is—the recommendation is this will go to offset what otherwise would be the deficit next year, so—
Yes.
I just—I guess we can get Raul to confirm that, but that was—I—I think that's where we're—we're headed with this.
Well, that's fine.
The item has the proceeds go into the deficiencies fund.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, well, we probably ought to—
Right.
—relook at that.
We haven't actually brought that issue to the Commission to hear it yet and—and confirm that, so it'll go into the deficiencies fund until you decide what to do with it.
Okay.
That's fair. That's fair enough. Okay. All right, we're—since we've—we've finished the regular agenda—
We do have our target issue updates, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and we're going to go to target issue update. Long-range planning. Commissioner Mustard.
Okay, let's see. We had a very lengthy discussion of the—the truck and trailer rental, which had come to the Commission as well, so I—I don't know that I need to go into that further. We've also—the Historic Preservation Ordinance has been, you know, as you're aware, a long time in the working stage of—there's been a citizens group that's been working on that. That is getting ready to come forward to this Commission. I think there has been, if not absolute consensus, much more consensus than we've had previously on kind of coming up with a—something that everybody can live with. I don't know if there's unanimous approval, but the—the Committee itself was pretty—you know, it was a pretty, you know, a lot of ten-to-one and eight-to-two kind of thing. So I think we're—we're—we're getting there. The creation of a joint city-county bike work group, that is something I—I've wanted to do that kind of will be an extension after I leave of the little work group that I've had on bike-related matters. And the—the proposal that will be coming to you is to have that a more permanent thing under the Planning Department. They've expressed interested in—in doing that, and so I think we're just going to kind of work out the mechanics of how that would work, but that's what we're talking about there. Appalachian Parkway landscaping, as you're aware, there've been a lot of unhappiness about the landscaping on the parkway right in front of the Capitol. And DOT has—and if I—correct me, Commissioner, if I'm remembering this correctly, is willing to give us—transfer that over to us and maybe give, let's say, or we're going to ask them if they will contribute some money to make a connection with that. So that's a little bit up in the air as to what we're going to do about that, primarily from the money side of things. And Thomasville Road traffic calming, I'm not remembering what we did on that.
I don't remember that either, actually.
Where is that? Where would that be?
Yeah, so I—I—I think that may be a premature something there.
At a Midtown?
It is.
That's a Midtown issue?
That was the issue of where's Gabe—
Oh, I know. Yeah, that's right. That's right. This is—this is in connection with the Whole Foods place, and the—
The whole—the whole what? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The Whole Foods that's coming out there where Miracle Theater was.
Ah, okay.
And the—the—to summarize this in a very brief fashion, I—I think that Gabe has a—a—a suggestion that will be a relatively modest, relatively inexpensive change that will help kind of move the traffic left instead of right, so that it facilitates people getting in and out of there. So that's—that'll be coming to you as well.
Right.
No—no traffic comes on Thomasville.
I—I just have one comment on that. First of all, we mentioned Midtown, and I think everybody knows that Midtown was featured in Southern Living magazine.
Yes.
And for those of you who haven't seen that, you really should. It really is—talks about Midtown in a way we—where we thought it is truly be—it is truly a sense of place, not becoming—it is a sense of place. And today I had—I—and going out to Conley Elementary, I want to compliment on Blairstone, going from Orange Avenue to Capital Circle. When you see the planting of the trees down there, it—it really is very nice. It looks good. And same thing on Orange Avenue coming to Blairstone—Blairstone. It really looks great when you look at that landscaping. And I don't know who's responsible for that, but whoever it is, it—it—it really puts a nice touch on getting out to—I know you know that getting out to—
I see it every day.
Yeah, it's—it's beautiful. All right, what's next? Economic development. Okay. We met on March twenty-eighth.
Mr. Mayor, I think, by the way, that would be a thank you to Gabe.
Huh?
Thanks, Gabe.
That's a Gabe thing?
He'll take it.
That's a Gabe—it—no, it's—if you haven't driven down there, you should. Those trees are getting big, and they're right in the median. It looks great. It really does.
Well, have you also noticed all the yellow-blooming flowers in our medians?
Yes, oh, yeah.
All over the city? What are—what kind of flowers are those, Gabe?
They're Daylilies.
Daylilies? Yeah, they're also really pretty this time of year.
And as an aside, you go to the interchanges. I know we're not responsible for the planting of—the of the interchanges on our ten, but they're look—they're looking great as well.
But actually, we are responsible—
Are we?
—for having a lot of input into the design, because that isn't what was proposed. And Hill to Gilchrist and our little—
That's right.
—tree committee, we had to weigh in and fight and a whole bunch of stuff, but it turned out pretty good.
Oh, it turned out great. When you go out there now, you can imagine what it's going to look like when those trees mature. It's going to really be a—really be very, very—and this at every interchange, too. So I like what's happening. I think we all do.
The—the softer side of the City Commission.
Right. Lot of things that people—you know, a lot of things that people don't understand what we're trying to do to make the city the kind of city we want it, and those are the kinds of projects that really do it. Okay. Economic development. At the Economic Development Target Issue Meeting, the Committee spent the majority of our time reviewing the 2012 City Commission priorities that are assigned to our Committee, and specifically, a development plan for an economic development strategy plan, and a review of the cultural plan as well. Present during this discussion were a number of members from the Economic Development Council of Leon County and COCA. And in developing the economic development strategy, we will include funding mechanisms. We'll try and see how we can get these things funded to support these incentives and potential progress. Funding support for consideration as a part of the blueprint extension as well. We'll see what we can do with that. We had some discussion as well on the cultural plan. And this was something that, obviously, I—I hope a lot of us are attuned to. And we're going to look at the 2003 plan and see where—the where it needs to be revised or changed or whatever. And—and specifically, we did indicate that we're going to try and see if we can find a dedicated funding source, which may be a challenge, but I think is worth the effort. And I think Commissioner Zifford would agree. I hope that we need to see if we can fund cultural activities in this community in—in a—a more efficient and effective way than we're doing now. With the pro—proposed development on Gaines Street, we know the college town is coming, and there is a proposal—not a proposal, I guess it's already there—to—to fill out the—the piece from Woodward Avenue—I guess that's Lafayette? What road is that? All the way back almost to the Civic Center.
Yeah.
And it's a huge development.
Madison.
What?
Madison.
Madison? It's Madison? It really is a nice development, and it really, as—as was indicated in the meeting, that area is now reaching the critical mass where it's going to really jump off and be the kind of community, the kind of area that we would like. I—it's—it's amazing what's happening down in that area and how it is going to enhance both campuses, Florida A&amp;M and Florida State University, because it's right in the middle. And it really is going to be a great project, so.
Mayor, I—I just wanted to kind of amplify. We talked about this at the CRA meeting, but I—I wanted to get our staff, Michael, to—to, you know, at the next CRA meeting, or sometime relatively soon, just a little kind of overview on what's the overall kind of Gaines Street plan, particularly in terms of use of the CRA and subsidy. And, you know, I—I just want to have a feel of somebody outside saying, "Hey, you're doing the right thing," or "You ought to think about this," or "You're really only ten percent there, and you got to get—you know, don't stop now," or whatever, just some kind of, you know—you know, somebody—I think we have consultants on board, you know, there's somebody that say, "All right, this is—you know, let's—let's think through this before we just say, 'Okay, check here, you get a ten percent for your—"
Right.
"-property."
Sure.
The other thing to weigh into that is whether we ought to consider expanding the area covered by the design guidelines. I—I think they currently don't cover the north side of Gaines Street or Madison Street, as I recall, and it might be time to think about whether that's something that ought to be done. So if we could just add those two things to that discussion of—at the CRA would be great.
Sounds good. Commissioner?
You had mentioned the sales tax extension. Is it possible for us to have an update or a discussion at our retreat on the sixteenth of May about what the progress of that's making?
Yes.
And what projects you have in mind? It'd be great.
Actually, that'd be great timing.
We have a retreat?
Okay, thank you.
I will miss all of you.
That's right.
That's okay. I'll leave my list. I won't be here for that meeting.
Well, that's not a retreat, right?
Yeah.
That was the—and—and I noticed that in the futures list, the mayor was supposed to be gone then, too, so I'm questioning whether we really want to do that if there's only three of us.
What's that?
That's the—the date that you guys set aside to have your—just your—
Talk about—
—kind of target issue kind of overall meeting.
The eighteenth?
When we met—it came out of the retreat, actually, the discussion for that date. We said that quarterly, we were going to try to get together, and we acknowledged at that time that trying to get everybody there was going to be difficult.
So we're missing—
Two and five.
—two people on the sixteenth of May?
Right. Well, and not to sound like former Commissioner Katz, but, you know, I told you so, this is why we didn't quit doing these, because we could never get a forum.
Well, I know, but I want you to know that I have a trip to Richmond planned, and I'm—I'm leaving on the eleventh, and I'm coming back on the sixteenth, just for this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's—this—I don't know if we can resolve this at—this particular time, but this—
Probably not. It's a good thing that we are aware of it, though. Thank you for bringing that up.
But—but what—but I—I mean, I really think we ought to resolve it. I don't think we should do it if there's only three of us.
I would like to reschedule it, because as I said, we've already gotten an agenda item, so—
Should—um, would you like to—to try to find another date that might work? Commissioner Ziff—
I would. You know, I've—I've—it's been on my calendar since May of last year, so—
Right. Well, okay, we'll find another date for a special meeting, and we'll have sales tax and other things on that agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Health and Human Services. The first topic we discussed was my appointment to the Community Neighborhood Renaissance Partnership. We had a vacancy on that, and at our meeting, we discussed appointing me to that, which then the City Commission finalized on the twenty-eighth. I'm not going to review Goodwill Real Estate Project, because we just voted on it and had a pretty long discussion. And then the final item is the Change for Change Opt-In Program with Utility. Currently, right now, we have a two percent participation, which has, over the seven years, brought in about three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. We've went back and forth on how we should go forward with this, and the final discussion was is that for a year or so, I think we'll market it a lot heavier, so more people know about what the option is, in hopes of a greater participation. And that is my very short report.
Very good report.
Next item.
We are on un-adj进了 speakers.
Well, we can take un-adj进了 speakers now, or we can take them after six o'clock, but I—I think it's just as well. Any speakers?
Mayor, we have a speaker, Dr. Erwin Jackson.
All right.
While Mr. Jackson's setting up, could I make one quick comment? I just wanted to let our viewing audience know that when they see us up here messing with these iPads, we are not checking our email. We are now going paperless as of next meeting. And I, basically, we're practicing for that day. And that's what we're doing up here with the iPad.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. At our last city commission meeting, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Marx called me a fanatic, which was somewhat disappointing since, especially after members of NAACP called for more civility in our public discourse. A fanatic was defined as someone who can change his, who can't change his mind and won't change the subject. Unlike a fanatic, my statements are founded on facts that are well documented. Therefore, I will continue to speak the truth until every citizen in Tallahassee understands the depth of corruption in the John Marx administration. The Marx administration has forgotten the quote from Sir Walter Scott in 1808, which says, "Oh, what a tangled web we weave when first we practice to deceive." I have part of the triangle up here. And basically, the important part of that is that WCTV reported on the city attorney hiring Donna Brown to spy on me. A viewer posted a response which said, quote, "Wait till Mr. Jackson remembers why Donna Brown has a grudge against him and figures out her connection to Marx." And it was signed Biscuit. I don't know who Biscuit is, but this is a public request that Biscuit called me because I know we have a lot to chat about. What I do know is that Mr. Marx and Mr. English have created a very tangled web. Mr. English has tried to cover up or explain away the truth about biomass, deferred comp, Honeywell, and AT&amp;T. Truth died a long time ago when it comes to Mr. English's defense of Mr. Marx. Mr. English hired Scott Darnell, who was a career criminal and facing felony charges, to gather information on me. His business partner, Donna Brown, was a TPD police officer, and according to department records I received, was a roommate of a Heather Longman. Several years ago, Longman entered my business, made unfounded accusations, until I was forced to call the Tallahassee Police Department to have her removed. A second officer did arrive and escorted her out of my business. And later, she was suspended. A few months after that, I found out that she was found guilty of perjury and was asked to resign or be fired, and she resigned. Several police officers have also reported that Mrs. Brown stated publicly that Jackson would regret the day he caused a problem for Heather. I'm going to continue to unravel this. This is what this diagram shows. I've sent copies to the commissioners. One other thing I'll point out is that two weeks ago, members of this commission asked that my expenses be paid due to city violating my private rights, property rights. I got a letter today that the city has decided that they would rather take me to go to court over this. And that's going to cost us another approximately $10,000. But it will give us an opportunity to further delve into these issues. Thank you very much.
We do have a copy of this, right? Okay, we'll get it. Thank you. Next speaker.
And I do have a copy to put in the file.
That's the only speaker we have at this time, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we're on city commission information sharing of ideas.
Anybody want to share any ideas?
Yes, sir. So during the retreat, we talked about the upcoming departures at the appointed official level. And we kind of have not gotten back to revisiting what that conversation and what that process will look like. But we are, the clock is still ticking, and we know we have until pretty much the end of the year to sort of figure this whole thing out. And I'm not asking now, but I do want to put on the radar and maybe even on a future agenda, an opportunity for us to engage around a real sensible timeline for doing this. You know, at one point, as part of the discussion, we may have mentioned that if we could secure a person hiring prior to the departure, that that might be something we were interested in doing. And so you would have the appointed official and maybe one in waiting or a designee whose tenure would overlap with the other. There was also comments made about, at least from some of us, that we had a greater comfort level with the folks who were already senior staff within some of these departments and pretty much moving up individuals that are already there versus going out for a longer drawn-out process. And again, I don't mean to bring these issues up without them being properly thought about and properly staffed. But I do think we should, to me at least, resolve a timeline issue. Second, a process that we want to undergo in appointing new officials. And then, if we feel comfortable going there, at the next point we discuss this, determining whether or not it is worth going out to collect resumes for the positions, or whether there is some comfort level inside the organization without, without the need to go out and accept or solicit applications or resumes for the positions.
Commissioners, that was, that was one of the issues that was scheduled for your May 16th agenda.
Which isn't happening now.
Well, it isn't, but we are going to find a new date.
Commissioner Musson?
Yeah, I was going to bring this up as well. So I appreciate Commissioner Gillum doing that. And I'd agree, I think we need to probably do this sooner than later. My suggestion would be, because the timing is a little bit staggered here, that maybe we, and the, and the process may be different depending on the position.
Sure.
So I would suggest we maybe address the city attorney's position first because it's the first one that would come up. And maybe schedule this just for discussion at, you know, either the next city commission meeting or when Commissioner Ziffer will, before he is out for a little while. So, yeah, I think I'd be fine next week. I think the decision we really need to make is, do we want to go out?
Right.
And that's just something we need to talk through and decide.
Perhaps we could, in both cases, ask for perhaps a suggestion from the current position holder, if they have a recommendation, which would be at least a starting point for us for discussion? Is that reasonable?
You know, I think ultimately, the city, you know, the city commission will have to decide what it's most comfortable with. And I think if we want to, in our own individual capacity, seek that guidance.
Okay.
I think it's fine.
I would agree with, with all of this. Let's see what we can do as soon as we possibly can. Commissioner?
Well, I'll be here for the next two meetings, so perhaps we could actually agenda this as an item. And preferably, at the front end of the meeting, this is pretty important. And as we lose, not that we any of us lose focus, but I don't want to have any time issues because this is important.
And just real quickly, for the purpose of timeline, which comes up first and which comes up?
City Attorney.
City Attorney comes up first, followed by the-
Attorney.
And how many, how far after that?
About three months apart.
Okay, so, so there is a possibility we may want to address them differently. There may be different processes for each, but I, it sounds like all of us are comfortable with getting this on the agenda in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Anything further? I got a couple of things. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I just had one thing. The National Bike Month Kickoff Expo is May 1st at Clayman Plaza at 8:00 a.m., Capital City Cyclists, Community Services, North Florida. It's called Tallahassee on Two Wheels. And it's the start of the whole month of bicycle stuff, including the Bike to Work Week, which I want to make sure all of you are going to participate in. So, so there'll be more information. I just wanted to get that out there, May 1st.
May have to do a parking ride.
A parking ride.
Come on, come on.
Star Metro, you put them on the front of the bus, take the bus, take it off.
Park bus. All right, that sounds like a, sounds like a good idea. I don't have a bicycle, but maybe by that time.
Don't pull a Rick Minor now. Get, get out there and pull in just right in front of the, you know.
That actually reminds me of something. I want to thank everybody that participated in the springtime run. There were some of us that had no intention of running, and we ended up running the whole thing and still paying a severe price and painful legs. But it was great. I know Commissioner Musson ran and great pictures on the web. Mayor, I know that you ran or walked or ran-walked. And I know there were a lot of others, and we had a good team. We did well, as I recall, I believe.
I'm not so sure if I call what I did running. I'm not a runner, not a runner, but I did do the one mile. I did run the one mile. And I felt it the next day, and the next day, and the next day. But I'm feeling fine right now. Commissioner Gillum?
Yeah, just, I know we're wrapping up for a quick break, but wanted to acknowledge, Madam Manager, you, your staff in Equity and Workforce Development for the, what I felt was a really successful race and cultural relations summit. There were some really powerful speakers. And I think, you know, pretty transformative for some of the people who attended. And then, second, I attended the city's, for the first time, the city's Sunday Easter egg roll in Myers Park. And I don't know if you've been, I mean, there are thousands of people who, in fact, I don't, I'm not sure if y'all given it real eggs or some jelly beans, or if there's money in those plastic eggs. But it, to me, appeared to be a really, really neat mixture of our community coming together, an awesome gathering place. It was safe. People had a lot of fun.
About 1,400 people.
1,400 people. Well, it felt like a lot more, but whichever. That's, it's, it was a pretty successful event. And I asked when I got out there for Ashley, and the woman I was speaking to said, you know, oh, I don't think Ashley's here. And I was thinking, well, who's running this? And she says, I'm in charge. And so the fact that there's so many people throughout the organizations that take ownership of these really large-scale events, I think is a credit to, to you all, to Mr. Crumpler, and the way that, that organization has led.
I, I too was going to talk about that. And I'm glad you mentioned it. And it, it was a tremendous success. It has been growing. Every year, we get wonderful speakers to come in. Mayor Nutter, Mayor of Philadelphia, he was outstanding in what he's discussed. And the other speakers as well. I regret, Madam City Manager, that I couldn't make lunch second day. As Rick said, there are only two reasons why I would miss that. One was death, and the other one was babysitting my granddaughter. And I did the latter. And it was a wonderful experience there. So forgive me for not being there for lunch, but, you know, Elsa Juliana comes a little bit first, okay? But it was, it was excellent. And we need to continue to do that and expand it so we can get other folks involved. There are others. Mayor Nutter is now trying to see whether or not he can do something similar in the, in Philadelphia, because apparently they don't do those kinds of things. So we, we have really touched some people nationwide with this program. And Sharon O'Fwane is not here, but tonight, but we certainly appreciate her kicking this off nine years ago, or 10 years, 10 years ago.
Nine.
And now Angela Hendriath has taken over, and she is doing an outstanding job in terms of putting this, this event together. So, and it's such a positive thing for this community. It really is, for people to get together and talk about their differences and their similarities. That's what it's about. And so we can begin to understand each other. And so I really, this thing has really gotten very, very big. And also, Commissioner, former Commissioner Maddox, because he was the first one to thought about doing something like this. And now we've just expanded on his idea. I've got two items. In my county, in the mayor chair meeting, Commissioner, Chairman, County Commissioner Chairman, Akin, Akin Yemi asked me to bring this for you for thought, and maybe we can do something about it. He would like for us to have a joint presentation, if you will, at Winterfest. Maybe the city and the county have one float together. He wants you to think about that. And I told him I would bring it before you. And I think it probably has some merit. And let's see what we can do. And I want you all to think about it. And at some point in the future, I will bring it back. The other thing is another joint thing he wants to do, have a joint meeting on so, on topics, possibly. You know, we had one recently, and it worked out pretty well. Was, was that CRTPA? It was something. We had a joint meeting, and we talked about it and discussed, and eventually came to a consensus. So Commissioner Akin Yemi asked me to bring this to you. I want you to think about it and see whether or not it's worth our exploring both a joint float and a joint meeting with the county commission. Anything else?
We have another speaker.
Mayor, we do have another un-adjented speaker, if you'd like to take him now.
Sure, absolutely. If he likes to come out now. Come on.
Bob Ippolito. Mayor, I think we ought to also be sure that at the end of the meeting, we give people the opportunity because they, they expected at that time. So we'll, we'll let these people-
No, that's fine.
We have others later. We'll bring them before.
Well, when we come back and have the public hearing, we're going to also open it up again at that point in time after six o'clock. So.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much for fitting me in. My name is Bob Ippolito. I'm the president of Collin Homes Association, Incorporated, located at 2705 Collin Way, Tallahassee, Florida. On February 24, 2012, I sent a request for assistance letter to our city manager, Ms. Thompson, regarding Collin Estates stormwater issues. A copy of the letter was also provided to our mayor, each of our city commissioners, the city underground utilities general manager, the city attorney, and the residents of Collin Estates. Ms. Thompson quickly responded on March 5th that we would have the opportunity, got to catch my breath.
Take your time.
We would have the opportunity to meet with city officials by the end of March to clarify and address each issue and the relevant materials detailed in our correspondence, which had been discussed in the past, but not to the best of my knowledge, never resolved or documented for more than 20 years. When the meetings are conducted, we will greatly appreciate a member of our elected commission to be in attendance as well. We appreciate and look forward to establishing the meeting date and time to resolve our disagreements that started in 1982. And when can we anticipate that we'll be provided with a date and time for this meeting?
I can tell you, Mr. Ippolito, that I have a draft letter that is, I looked at today, that'll be coming out to you probably no later than Friday. And it will suggest some dates and see when you're available to meet and discuss them.
Perfect. I really appreciate it. And again, if we can have one of the commissioners at least be at the meeting, we'd also appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
No one else at this time.
Okay, we'll be in recess then until six o'clock, where we'll have a public hearing. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
No one else at this time.
Okay, we'll be in recess then until six o'clock, where we'll have our public hearing.
Okay, good evening Commissioners, I'm Roxanne Manning with the Planning Department. This is the second and final public hearing on this item. It's an amendment to the master plan for FSU. It's an amendment, it is not a new agreement. You reviewed this before on February 22 of this year. Very simply put, this amendment incorporates these five buildings that the university acquired, four of them from the state, the Warren Winchester Firestone Buildings and the Bloxham Annex. It incorporates their square footage and the parking that's already related to those buildings. It also incorporates the former Morgan Electric Building over on Lake Bradford Road. Given the totals, this would add 168,926 square feet to the total amount of square footage that is developable and approved in the master plan. It also adds only 474 parking spaces which are already constructed. And that is the heart of what this amendment does. It also finalizes conditions which were applied before, for example, completion of the Stormwater Master Plan or the Stormwater Study for the Southwest Campus, and also several transportation concurrency constructions that we had required in the master plan. If you approve this tonight, it will be in effect until December 31, 2018 unless the university and the city propose additional amendments. And we are here to answer any questions you may have.
So, the only thing we're doing here is adding this to the master plan, adding these properties to the master plan? And it includes the buildings and the land that the buildings are on, or what else, and some parking spaces?
Correct. In order for the university to be able to utilize or to redevelop or use these buildings, they need to be shown in their master plan. They've already accepted the buildings from the state, so they need to formally put them into the master plan.
Okay. I'm trying to get a handle on what land that they get. And I know they got the buildings, but there's land around those buildings, property around those buildings. And I'm trying to get a handle on what are they getting, are they getting something more than just the buildings? Of course they are.
Right. In this graphic over here, it's a little bit small, but basically it's just the parcels that the buildings sit on. There's no additional land or anything elaborate like that.
That kind of answers, okay. Commissioners?
I have a question, just, I see the FSU rep is here, and this is a little unrelated, but as long as we're here, I thought I would ask this. On the parking stuff that's in the plan, because what's in our agenda item references 22,000 spaces. And I had asked this of our staff before when this came up, it's just to, and they had explained to me that spread over the current campus and the future campus, or the south, whatever we call it, the Southwest Campus, is that correct? And are there specific, you know, is that a portion between the two? Are there specific additional parking complexes on the current main campus? Or just want to kind of get a feel for that?
We, and Tom Osteen is here to answer that question, but I did want to direct your attention to the screen. That shows the existing blue parking in blue, and then the new parking in red, and that totals to, I can barely see it, but I think it's 17,677 spaces for the main campus.
The total of it?
Total, total. What is already out there now in the parking structures and surface parking, and then the, you know, 464 spaces that are shown in the red for the new buildings, and then the rest of that is on the other campuses.
Right, so there's no more, at this point, parking garages planned for the main campus, is that correct?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, the only other thing I had was that the recycling facility would be built on the Morgan Electric site. I hope that is on stilts, because Mr. Morgan until the very end would call me, you know, constantly about his flooding issues there, so...
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to accept.
Properly moved in a second? Any speakers? Okay, properly moved in a second, all in favor of the motion to accept the amendments to the FSU main campus plan? Say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously, thank you. Do we have any additional unagenda speakers?
We have none.
All right, we stay on adjourned.
Tallahassee Fire Department, code number 365. Applications for this position are accepted on a continuous basis. For minimum training and experience criteria, please visit the city's website at talgov.com.
On the latest Tallahassee matters, we meet Star Metro's Mobility Coordinator and find out what...